Things all welcome, call this meeting to order. And at a very special time for our city, we ask Pastor William L. Crest from the More Than Conquerors Church to come and give us words of comfort.
Good evening and God bless. We would like to honor our Mayor Bob Dyer and Vice Mayor James Wood, all the council members, all of the residents, everyone in attendance here. It is in this time that we need to certainly lark arms together and to look to the Lord for peace and grace in this perilous time. We're certainly praying for the families and the friends that have suffered such an atrocity and certainly for our city, that the Lord would certainly enable us to continue to move forward. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this time that we can come together as the councilmen and women who have been commissioned to lead this city. In spite of, Lord, all of the difficulties that are beyond imagination, that, Lord, they must carry a gargantuan load. On one hand, they must certainly see to the hurting families and the concerns of the residents and the list is just, I'm sure, just tireless. And, Lord, then they must also yet conduct the business of the city and lead the city in this dire time. So we pray now that your peace that passes all understanding would keep their hearts and minds. We pray, Lord, that you would enable the city residents, Lord, to certainly, in a greater sense, to lark arms and to let your love just richly abide and spread all across the city from door to door, all across the city again, Lord. We pray that your peace would reside in the city. And, Lord, that most of all, your healing would continue to take place. We need your healing, we need your presence. And, Lord, we pray that as the council members conduct their business, that they would have your peace and that they can, would be able to clearly see the direction that they should take, Lord, even as they seek to with resolve lead the city through this time and lead the city ahead. We pray that you would just strengthen them. We pray that you would meet their needs and we pray that you would lift their spirits. And most of all, we lift up the families, Lord, that have suffered this loss, that, Lord, you would certainly hold them in your arms and that they would know your grace and your healing. And we thank you for that. We pray that this night would be just a night where your glory will be in this place, your peace and your presence, that, Lord, the city can continue its mission to be the greatest city here in this area in the country, that you will restore, Lord, anything that's been certainly impacted by this time. So we thank you for all of this. I pray in the name of Jesus, my Lord, amen.
And thank you Reverend Crest. Before we do the pledge, may I respectfully request a moment of silence for our former fallen friends, comrades, workers, their families, and our community. Thank you and God bless you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, thank you for your relevant words Pastor. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we do the roll call?
Yes, sir, all present.
Okay, um, can we have a motion for the certification of the closed session?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you've certified the closed session and be in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, can we have a certification of the informal, minutes of the informal and formal sessions of May twenty first, 2019? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, we will be going on to the consent agenda. Mr. Vice Mayor, I understand we have an add-on?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move that we add the following item to the agenda. An ordinance confirming the declaration of a local emergency due to the May thirty first, 2019, shooting at the Virginia Beach Municipal Center. Whereas Virginia Code, Section forty-four dash one forty-six point two-one, authorizes the local director of emergency management to declare the existence of a local emergency subject to confirmation by the governing body. Whereas in conformity with the Commonwealth of Virginia Emergency Services and Disaster Law of two thousand, Virginia Code Sections forty-four dash one sixty-three point one-three, City Council by adoption of Section two point, two dash four eleven through two dash four one three of the City Code created the Office of Emergency Management and appointed the city manager as a director of emergency management. Whereas in response to the occurrence and the resulting circumstances of the tragic shooting at the Virginia Beach Municipal Center on the afternoon of May thirty first, 2019, the city manager as the director of the emergency management issued a declaration of a local emergency on May thirty first, 2019, effective at six twenty-two P.M. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council, the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, that pursuant to Virginia Code Section forty-four dash one forty-six point two-one, the City Council hereby confirms a declaration of a local emergency issued by the city manager on May thirty first, 2019, at six twenty-two P.M., a copy which is attached here to and incorporated by reference, and that the City Council will adopt an additional ordinance during a future meeting to the end of the declared emergency once the City Council has concluded that all necessary emergency actions have been taken. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, the vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have added this agenda to, this item to the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move for approval under the consent agenda the following items under ordinances resolution. Item H two, resolution to provide for the issuance and sale of general obligation public improvement and refunding bonds in the maximum amount of one hundred and eighty-five million dollars and provide for the form, details, and payments thereof to fund authorized public improvements and refund previously authorized and issued bonds. Item H two, resolution to support the city's local commitment for the Virginia Department of Transportation regarding Pacific Avenue Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Program Project. Item H four, ordinance to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement between Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, the city, and ten other regional localities regarding regional economic development. Item H five, resolution authorize and direct the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services and the city regarding purchase of agricultural reserve program easements. Item seven, ordinance to authorize temporary encroachments into a portion of city property known as Croatan Beach at the rear of five four two South Atlantic Avenue regarding construction and maintenance of a wooden walkway. Item eight, ordinance to appropriate three hundred thousand dollars from fund balance to the FY twenty eighteen nineteen Parking Enterprise operating budget regarding contractual services. Item nine, ordinances to accept and appropriate, A, ninety-one thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars to the FY eighteen nineteen Department of Emergency Medical Services operating budget regarding support rescue squad operations and resupply training equipment. Item B, one million six hundred eighty-six thousand one hundred forty-one dollars from Virginia Office of Children's Services to the FY eighteen nineteen Human Services operating budget and transfer three hundred thirty-five thousand ninety-six dollars within the operating budget regarding Support Children's Services Act CSA program. Item C, one hundred twenty-four thousand four hundred forty-nine dollars from the Virginia Beach Library Foundation and transfer ninety-one thousand dollars from General Fund Reserve for contingencies contingencies to the FY eighteen nineteen Libraries operating budget, operating regarding purchase of a book, bookmobile. Item ten, ordinance to modify appropriations and transfer twenty-seven thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars in the FY nineteen twenty Housing and Neighborhood Preservation operating budget regarding impact of federal fund changes and ensure compliance with federal programmatic requirements. Item eleven, an ordinance confirming the declaration of a local emergency due to the May thirty first, 2019, shooting at the Virginia Beach Municipal Center. So move, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the consent agenda as read by Vice Mayor Wood.
Okay, we will move on to the other items to be heard. I want to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that allows certain representatives or groups to speak for ten minutes applies only to planning items. As to all other items on the agenda, each speaker will be, whether speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Also, when speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other persons who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to record. Okay, the first item, item number one, ordinance to declare eleven point seven acres of city property on Bonnie Road in excess of the city's needs and authorize the city manager to enter into purchase agreement for the sale of the property to Olympia Development Corporation, deferred from May twenty first, 2019. Can we call the first speaker?
Mrs. Marsh. And the second speaker is Debbie Imprimento.
Welcome.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Dyer. Again, thank you for all you've been doing during this time of terrible tragedy. It is appreciated. I'm here to talk to you about not selling the excess city property on Bonnie Road. And you all should have a email from Eric Stringfield that I received along with a map of Bonnie Road and two sixty-four. I'm here because my concerns are the traffic. And I brought those up the last time I was here. I mentioned that there have been eighty crashes at the intersection of Bonnie and Independence. And of those, there were eleven injury crashes. So it's a pretty significant amount of crashes. Not far from there, just a very short distance, at Virginia Beach Boulevard, there are a hundred and ten crashes and thirty-three injury accidents. So that's just a few stoplights away. And if you go down to the other end of Bonnie Road, there is the fifteenth worst intersection according to the statistics that Rick Lowman from the Traffic Engineering Department provided with me. And he says it's the fifteenth worst intersection because it's got a much lower number of traffic cars that go through it, but it had fifty-nine accidents or crashes and sixteen injuries. So we have a very high traffic area there. And I gave you all this and I put an arrow on the, the copy that I gave you because that's the point where two sixty-four and Bonnie Road practically touch. There's maybe ten feet between them, fifteen, I don't know. It's a very small distance. And VDOT is doing a phase one study trying to decide if they are going to use Bonnie Road as part of the interchange. And it seems premature to me to make a decision on what we're going to do with this excess property, build it up, add more traffic, more anything, if we're going to be putting a lot more traffic on Bonnie Road from the interstate. And I would just ask you not to sell the property and to delay this until you get the VDOT report. Because once you have the VDOT report, it'll be like the Dewberry Report. It's going to be, I believe, seismic. And that interchange at two sixty-four and Independence, I've gotten off of it a thousand times or more in the ten years I've lived in Thalia. And it's a really, really bad intersection. And I'm just very worried about accidents and injuries and the number of people who are going to be hurt and the volume of traffic. And if you don't take a look at it now, once you build that area up, it's going to be too late. So please, take a moment, go by there, look at it. You'll be able to see how close it is. And if VDOT decides they want to put traffic on Bonnie Road, then they're going to do it. And whatever else is there is really going to be impacted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Debbie Imprimento. And then Conrad Shisventer.
Welcome.
Hi, my name's Debbie Imprimento. I'm here because I had the opportunity to watch the City Council workshop last week. I was floored and appalled at the same time. The gentleman that gave the presentation for the development project on Bonnie Road admitted the entire multi-use concept was to obtain economic incentives, was not to fill a need that existed for apartments or for more parking. Please do not pass this. Many of you know that my, that our civic league, Kings Forest, has been trying to resolve some issues with city leaders regarding Buchanan Creek, a natural tidal estuary that borders our neighborhood. I haven't ever done it before, so I'm a little nervous. Anyway, the reason we're having issues is that somehow this natural body of water is owned by developers. When we pointed this out, that the Code of Virginia indicates that all waters are already owned by the state. Deputy City Manager Thomas Lee, he said it was man-made, so it was private property. We know that it's not, it's not private property. I'm bringing this up because the same thing is going on right now with tidal, with Thalia Creek. The waters are for all people to enjoy. City leaders are giving away our rights, and I personally am tired of it. I'm going to give you all really the benefit of the doubt because you make your decisions based on information that's given to you. The city's been working on Thalia Creek Greenway for a long, a long time. They think that they have to develop this last parcel on Bonnie Road because it's part of Thalia Creek Greenway. First, it's a wetland and it's in a flood zone. This was Barbara Henley's baby. It's actually a great idea, and I think you all should finish it, but you don't have to develop the rest of the parcel to do it. I understand each phase of the project along Thalia Creek is being done by the developer for each parcel. For example, the section behind, or the section of Thalia Creek behind Midtown Apartments was constructed, instructed by Ripley Heat Walls Company. He's also a member of the Planning Commission and a director at Town Bank. Funny thing, though, is after this project is complete and it becomes Thalia Creek Greenway, shows the developer as owning that section of a natural tidal creek. John Moss, does this sound familiar? You said you could not help us with the issues we have in Buchanan Creek because it's privately owned. Now you see how tidal water becomes private property, and this really needs to stop. Do you know the difficulties of the people that live adjacent to tidal water that somehow is owned by commercial developers? If you don't, then you need to ask me or somebody that lives along the creek in Birchwood, Malibu, or Kings Forest. By the way, a lot of the homes that were built along the creek in Kings Forest were built in two thousand, so it's not a low-income neighborhood. That shouldn't matter, though. I was actually told that Councilmember Louis Jones might remember Indian artifacts were found along the creek in Buchanan Creek.
Uh, thank you very much.
Oh, I'm done.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Conrad Shisventer. And then the next speaker is Virginia Wasserberg.
Welcome Conrad.
Leadership is a trait we want when we go to the polls. Leadership is a trait we need when time is triads like none other. And this list is too short to do it justice, but my experience the past five days requires, I point out, my solemn thanks to city leaders I observed handle recent events with unprecedented poise. Chief Severa, City Manager Hanson, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood, Councilwoman Wooton, Councilman Berlucci, Councilman Rouse, and so many others. When we felt small, you were big. Now, on the matter of selling public plots of land on Bonnie Road, if I were a City Councilmember, I'd vote against the specific public over to private sale. I've used city government as a steward to the public and the environment and our wallets. Due to the area's characteristics as a flood-prone wetland, this is mostly underdeveloped, and it's of greater city utility to save infrastructure spending here by not building parking structures and preventing private structures from flooding costs. City government can save money by voting no. They can conserve the environment by voting no. And they can buy an ounce of flooding prevention by voting no. And thank you.
Thank you Conrad.
Virginia Wasserberg. And then after Ms. Wasserberg is Tim Worst.
I'm a little short.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want you to understand that I am a Christian. I am a woman of faith. And my faith defines the entirety of who I am. It is my life. There are times that my finite humanity surfaces and I fall short. In those times, I can only seek forgiveness from others and do my best to move forward better than I have in the past. I stood on the lawn in front of the police headquarters on Sunday late afternoon looking at the twelve memorial crosses and peace offerings. In the distance was this building we are in and building two. I realized I had come to this chamber and stood at this podium and spoke before this body many times to fight for something. And in comparison, those twelve beautiful souls had no chance to fight for themselves on Friday afternoon. It was a sobering and very convicting moment for me and one that I hope not to forget. I am still in opposition of this ordinance, even with its clear changes from two weeks ago, but because it encourages development in FEMA map, in a FEMA-mapped flood zone. However, I want to make it clear that I do not oppose the members of this council and I do not oppose our city manager. If I've ever made you feel like I opposed you, I ask for your forgiveness. Twelve people of our great city lost their lives on Friday, and I've watched the twelve of you press forward to keep our city great. Collectively, all twelve of you have displayed an incredible amount of leadership, solidarity, unity, and strength for our city. And I am beyond grateful for all that you have done for our city and all that you will continue to do. Please know that I have been praying for each one of you, for your peace, for your wisdom, for your strength mentally, physically, and spiritually. And I will continue to do so because I am called to do so. And regardless of our differences surrounding this ordinance, I wish to make it abundantly clear that although I oppose the ordinance, I support all of you and I support our city and our city manager and our city staff, our first responders, because I agree with you that we are VB strong. Thank you.
Virginia, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Very appreciated.
Thank you.
Tim Worst.
Hey, Tim, how you doing?
Good evening, sir. I'm not sure I could speak that eloquently, but I had some of those same thoughts of the leadership, the words, and the, and the strong presence that you've had in the last few days. You've done a very good job. I'd also like to say Chief Severa has done an excellent job. And I think that keeps coming out over and over and over in a lot of different areas. I also want to mention publicly, and you don't hear enough about the people who are in the hospitals now still fighting. And her name is Melanie Coffey. She's a fellow nineteen eighty-six graduate of Kempsville High School. So that's a name that I continue to think of and a person I continue to think of to pray for her strength, that she can pull through this. I'm here to talk about the, the land on Independence Boulevard and Bonnie Road. I went by there not too many days ago, saw one of the Parks and Recs people out there checking it out. That's the one thing I think that is good about that project is that trail and that area for a nice natural bridge, trail area for, for walking, for all the people that visit Virginia Beach in that area, and then for the residents that are close by or want to go to that place. But I think it's a horrible idea in general. Years ago, we bought that land for four or five million dollars, and my numbers aren't great here, but we bought that land for four or five million dollars. And then we sold it for one and a half million dollars. We bought it for four or five million, and then we sold it for one point five. That just doesn't make sense to me. This land is in a FEMA-mapped flood zone. This land is in a flood zone. We are having meeting after meeting after meeting, and they have been postponed for right now, but we are having meetings within the city and talks within the city constantly about flooding. And we want to make a decision to put more houses and more businesses in a flood zone. There's one word and only one word that can describe that, that my dad used to use all the time, and that's asinine. It's asinine. What does the traffic study say? RM mentioned some of the worst areas of traffic, and we want to put more houses and more apartments and more buildings there. And if that's not good enough, we want to give a developer millions of dollars to build a parking garage. It's enough, good grief, stop this. A Facebook post today said that, "When am I going to learn that council doesn't give a damn what we think and what we want?" I don't believe that, I don't believe that. I think we're better than that. But if this is approved, there is one subject or one area that we could improve in greatly, and we've learned this in the last couple of weeks, and that's affordable housing. So if this is approved, let's think about affordable housing.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, are we open discussion? Have a motion then discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the ordinance as written in the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Do we have a discussion at this point, Rosemary?
I'd like to, first of all, we're, this is going to be a straight sale, Mr. Worst. We're not doing the incentives that you had heard about before. But if the staff would talk about this being in a floodplain, a flood zone.
Thank you Bobby.
Yeah, yes, Ms. Wasserberg. The portion of the property is located within the AE flood zone. It is the, it is in an area that can be constructed. You are allowed to develop within the floodplain. You have to meet certain development criteria. It doesn't mean that it floods all the time. A portion of the property that is in the floodplain is already an impervious surface. It's already a hard surface and lay-down area from the previous construction on the site. But there are ways to construct on properties. There are a number of properties in the city that are along our waterways that are in floodplain that can develop and can be developed in a, in a manner that would meet the federal and the local requirements to build.
And are they, are they going to be doing some special underground filtering of, of the water?
As far as for the development of the site, they'll be required through the plan review process to capture their stormwater and to treat it appropriately before it goes into the creek. They will, I believe, there's discussions about undergrounding it to store it, to provide and so that it doesn't run off immediately. That there will also be where there's existing impervious cover, they'll have additional landscaping that will be required to be installed to help mitigate. Again, this is, we have not seen a finalized plan for this, but they will have to meet ordinance requirements to develop.
Thank you.
Anybody else, John?
Just to correct the record, we did, well, I should say, when Dennis Wool was associated with the Mental Health Board when we had one way back then, he was the one that entered into a contract to acquire what was then a hotel on that property to use for mental health purposes. Obviously, that wasn't really authorized by Mental Health Board, but that's a longer story. But the short of it is, as we began to look at it and dispose of it, we found out that the building was structurally unsound when someone else tried to buy it and then went and had it inspected. So obviously, then the structure was demolished. We then put it out for solicitation. Someone acquired it, they didn't fulfill the terms of the, they required it, we acquired it back. And it's been sitting out there, it's been used as a staging area for much of the development of Town Center. We were once approached by TBA to build a training school there, some may recall that. And so there's been a number of people that had looked for uses of that property. Olympia Development came forward and had had an proposal to develop two office buildings on that site. The staff, trying to follow the comprehensive plan, thought it should be a more mixed use of that property, including retail and apartments. The marketplace didn't provide the return on investment for the developer to pursue those types of uses, and that would only be possible with significant tax expenditures on our part incentives. That this council, I think, heard the public say, hey, this isn't what we should be doing. We've modified the resolution so there are no tax incentives. The Olympia Development will be building the thing they originally did. True enough that the, it is within that TIF and the, those property taxes will roll into the TIF vice the General Fund, but other transactions will come to the General Fund. But this is a true straightforward private sector. We're not providing any incentives to give them a competition. And someone who did a great job building Convergent Center with all private money without public participation, proving it can be done, is the one who's getting this. And I think normally, I'm not big on these, but this meets what capitalism is all about, private capital at private risk. And they're going to have to comply with all the necessary things to control their stormwater on their property. And I think this is maybe not the best of what someone would hope for, but I think this is a win-win, and I appreciate all the people that joined Louis and I on supporting this resolution.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point, the vote is open.
By a vote of ten to one, you've approved the ordinance regarding, regarding the sale of Bonnie Road, the property on Bonnie Road, sorry.
And may, may I just say one thing about that? You know-
You know, this whole project I've thought about very diligently, and I did ask for information as far as specifics about the flooding, the flood zone area, and the wet land area, and what was being done by the developer. I didn't get that information. But also, the fact that it is in a flood zone area, and when you develop in those areas, there are some unintended consequences, and it impacts that area. And for me, in order to support something like that, I'd have to have all the information. I have to know for sure it's not going to cause any unintended consequences, and more of a threat of flooding in that area, as opposed to some of the other concerns about traffic. So that's why my vote is no.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next one, it would be item under ordinances and resolutions, number six. Resolution to grant permits to allow emergency medical service agencies to operate in the city. A, Fast Track EMS LLC. B, Miracle Medical Transport LLC, otherwise known as Mid-Atlantic Regional Ambulance. C, MB Solutions LLC. D, Shore Transport Services Incorporated. And E, ISC Medical Transport LLC.
Speaker Conrad, please.
Have to excuse me, I put my notebook down, and then when to get it back up, I slammed my head on one of the seats. So, there I go. Now, I admit, when I called the city clerk today to speak on this, I ignorantly thought Virginia Beach City was introducing private EMS through these permits. Then I got home, I called Miracle Medical Transport LLC. Afterwards, Division Chief Kevin Lipscomb called me. For ten minutes, he spoke on private versus public EMS, provided needed information on who does what for EMS in the city. Private EMS helps the public with useful medical transport services, easing the load on the city's services. I'd vote to approve all the grant permits. And thank you again, Mr. Lipscomb.
Thank you, Conrad.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I move approval.
You have a motion to approve, and a second, and the vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have approved the resolution.
Okay, it's my understanding that we have speakers on the two planning items. Number one, Piney Grove Baptist Church for modification of conditions, religious use at 2804 Holland Road, District Seven, Princess Anne, which was deferred from May 21st, 2019.
Linda Russell.
I'm Linda Russell, and the last time I was here, what, was that two weeks ago? I told all of you how great these people are back here, and now the whole world knows how great they are. And thanks to all of y'all for everything y'all've done. And I would like to speak about this Piney Grove. I know some of you guys went there just a while back. Seems like everybody's looking for God. And I, if you went to that church, I'm sure you found him, okay? And you even mentioned Lord and turtles and Saiyans and stuff and all too, so I hope we found God, okay? Barbara, you asked us to get in our neighborhoods and find graves, and I did that. I think you're writing a book or something, and so I did that. And so the graves that are in my neighborhood took me to the Piney Grove Church, okay? So the Piney Grove Church is, I have graves from the 1800s. And your neighborhoods, SeaTac and everything, is apart. It's 1,800 members in that church, okay? I don't think they've been treated fairly. I really don't. And they don't either, okay? And I've told you guys too. And thank, thank you for, you'll be coming to my neighborhood soon as we can get ourselves squared away. Thank you for that. But anyway, I watched at home, and they were talking about the lights, and I think, you know, we were at the opening, and I had to go home because they were doing my underground wiring. Well, everything on that pole is being replaced, even the numbers. And guess what? After 50 years, I am getting streetlights that light up my whole area, okay? But that's a good thing, okay? And this is what we're coming to. We're going to have to get used to these streetlights. I went to the doctor, and he asked me, hey, do you have trouble driving at night? I said, are you serious? I can drive better at night than I can in the daytime. Everything is lit up, okay? And he said, my mom says the same thing. So we're going to have to get used to that. And so when I, actually, we had my, my son was over for dinner, and so how I found out about the lights, and the guy, you know, I was out talking to him, and he told me, you know, about the lights. And I don't think, so I pulled my shade, every morning I get up and I pull my shade, you know, on this side for the sun. So I did the same thing. So I really think that this church, I believe they said a million dollars they've spent trying to satisfy all the, I don't think that this, and I believe they said the police were called out. I don't know if you know anything about that, Barbara, while I spent the night, the neighbors were trespassing.
Thank you very much.
So anyway.
I was trespassing too, I guess. Never mind.
Thank you very much.
That's the only speaker, sir.
Okay, Mrs. Henley?
Yes, well, I believe the last two shields were installed this morning, which should pretty well resolve issues. I think there are still some adjustments to the sensors that they're working on, but otherwise, I think that would be the last thing that would meet the full conditions. And so I move that we allow the request to modify the conditions to be withdrawn.
Second.
Okay. The vote is open.
By a vote of eleven to zero, you have allowed the withdrawal.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Henley. And then the other planning item, speakers for the Anina Budick Webblin Properties LLC.
Yes, the first speaker is Anita Downs. And after Mrs. Downs will be Mrs. Marsh.
Welcome.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for letting me speak. Most of you know who we are and what our position is, and on behalf of the Webblin Farm Neighbors, I would like to express our sincere condolences to the families and friends of the victims of this tragedy, to the city employees of Building Two, to the citizens of Virginia Beach, and to its leaders who now have the difficult task of helping us heal. Thank you. We are opposed to this rezoning. We are aware of the recommendation to defer until August. This property is protected by an historic easement, precluding subdivision and multifamily units. Even if DHR comes back and approves this plan, that doesn't mean that the city council has to approve it. The city must honor its fundamental commitment to us as a neighborhood, and we hope that you will. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Marsh?
Welcome back.
After Mrs. Marsh is Brenda Reed.
Good evening, council members. I'm going to ask you, how many of you have actually been to the Webblin House, the Anna Budick House? I have. Okay, great, that's wonderful to see that many of you have been there. I'm really pleased, because I think that's a unique property, and the neighborhood that surrounds it is many newer homes. There are some of them with for sale signs, so there's not really a shortage of homes in that area. But it would very much change the character of that neighborhood if you add more traffic and multifamily homes, and build up that small, six and a half acres, so that it's covered with multifamily units, whether it's 15 or 17, or whatever was discussed today by the planning department. It sounds like too many houses, again, in an area that should be maintained the way it was gifted to the city. And I'm just really asking you to visit the house, if you haven't had a chance to get out there, and thank you to everyone who's already been there. But I'm also asking you to get a historic review, because once this is built up, once you eliminate it, it'll be like the Cavalier Lawn. Once it's built on, there's no going back. People can say, well, we wish we would have kept it this way, or we wish we would have done it that way, but it's built up now. And so I really think it's important for you to get a historic review and talk to people who do that, both at the state and the local level. I think it was you, Ms. Wilson, who mentioned that. I don't understand why this is going fast-tracked around that. It would seem that that would be just the minimum to find out, because we don't necessarily want to tear it down. I think Ms. Henley today in the informal mentioned that, you know, restoration would be expensive, but we need to look at restoration as opposed to removal or tearing something down. We're not going to have that back again. And I think we have to really look at the compatibility. That's the bottom line. Is it really compatible to build and develop that much? We seem to really be good at putting things through for developers. We just agreed to develop Bonnie Road. Can we slow down a little bit and look at this, and really decide what's good for the community and for the citizens? I mean, it would just be great if we could have one where we look at it for the citizens and have a clear understanding for citizens as to why we're doing this. Because I know you all understand why you did Bonnie Road. I don't understand it, but you all do, and I'm sure the developers do. So before we push forward with a historic home and whatever you're going to do there, please, take long enough to get it out there, so we, the citizens, have more engagement, because I don't feel we've had much engagement on some of these things, and I'd like to have more engagement in this historic home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brenda Reed, a lot, a loss. I'm just going to, yeah, I'm just going to say Brenda Reed.
Welcome.
Thank you. Ask me for a little bit of an indulgence. This is a little bit off track, but it kind of puts, maybe to let you know where my mind is at. Last Thursday, I was, I spoke with Susan Moore, Ms. Moore's daughter. And then, of course, the tragic events of Friday happened. And I'm in the financial services industry, so we were closing an office, and one of the individuals that was in that office, we had some conversations about some things, and one of the things that she does when she wishes someone farewell, whether she knows them or doesn't know them, what she says is, love you, you know, have a nice day, or love you, thank you for coming in. So that's kind of where my head is, and I know I'm going about things in a roundabout way, but thank you for allowing me to do that. And I want to thank the, the council and staff for weighing all the factors, and I know this is on for deferral, but I do want to reiterate the fact that regardless of whether the DHR approves or decides not to approve the conceptual approval, that the council still has the zoning issue. And that's still very near and dear to all of us, you know, that as citizens of the neighborhood, we counted for years, you know, that this property could not be developed. And it was donated by a citizen of Virginia Beach. It was bequested in her will, and that's important. We relied, again, in good faith that that would be the case, and it's even in, you know, your own zoning ordinance that the PDH too is not something that you intend to enlarge or to expand upon. So it seems to me that the burden of whether that is approved or not should be on the applicant, rather than it feels like it's on us, to prove that, you know, it's not something of worth. And that's kind of where I was going with this. Circling back around, I guess. Our reasons for opposing this are that it's against the zoning, and I realize that that's what the purpose of this is, but it seems like the burden of whether or not it should be in the public interest is on the applicant, not with us. And as us, as a community, those that live in that area, we don't see the public benefit. You'll hear that it needs to be rehabilitated, but this isn't the only way. This isn't the only way. So thank you for your time. Virginia Beach Strong.
Thank you.
Robert Roloff.
My name is Barulov, attorney for the applicant. We're here to request a deferral to August 20th. The only thing I'd like to say is this, I'm 73 years old. With that period of time, you develop a lot of relationships in this whole country. A lot of attorneys know me. I don't know you, you don't know me. You've done a great job, a great job in the voice of the city, very measured. What you had to say, I was very impressed. And goes for you too, and your comments. So all of you there, and those who were there, great job. We'll see you August 20th, and we'll take it from there.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
That's all the speakers.
Do we have a motion on this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I realize that the VHR has asked for a deferral so that they can evaluate the possible value of the redevelopment of the property. I just don't happen to agree with that. I, I think the applicant bought this property knowing what it was at the time that they bought it, had a responsibility to keep it up and keep it as it was when she bought it. I see no reason to change the, the character of the Cypress Point neighborhood for her to be able to develop it to, in a way to make more money. And in my opinion, stringing this out is not worth it. We need to get this over with and get a decision made, so that these people can rest tonight. So I'm going to move to deny the application.
We have a second.
Aaron, this is one of the second that had a chance to meet with the residents there. And, you know, my main concern was that this is a historic property within our city, which has an easement on it. And it was, I should say, that the dying wishes of the, the previous owner, the late owner, to keep it as such, and to basically overlook that, knowing the owner who purchased it had a right or should keep it historic, and she knew that the property owner that were purchasing this. So I want to make sure we preserve our historic value within our city and easements that are already in place. We respect that, so I second that motion.
Okay, Mrs. Henley?
Well, I have to tell you, I'm very torn, as I expressed to the people I met with them the other day. I'm certainly not in favor of violating zoning and, and so forth, but I also know the reality that a private individual simply would have to be one major billionaire to be able to maintain and restore a house that was built in the 1600s. And because I would like to have that house retained as a part of our historic fabric, I think we have to realize that there's no way in the world we can require a private individual to do that. Being on the National Register is only a, as it said, it's, it's just an honorary thing. And so I think that what we're doing is sealing the fate of this property to collapse. And I would hope that the, the folks that allowed the easement to put on by having to review this perhaps would come up with some assistance, the DHR, because the private individual is going to have to have some kind of mechanism for restoring this property and, and then maintaining it. And there's, I, I think this is, if we vote for this, I think we're, we're voting to just allow the property to collapse.
A procedural question for the attorney. You know, and I concur with Mr. Jones's recommendation, but procedurally, is this in order to do that, you know, given the, did the applicant have adequate time to, you know, prepare? Since this was a motion to refer, I just want to be fair to everybody.
No, it wasn't a motion to defer, it was a motion to deny.
To deny. Is that procedurally okay? Is that procedurally okay?
It's a recommendation of the staff and a request by the applicant. I believe your ordinance allows you to decide whether or not to grant the motion to defer.
Or deny.
Kay, is it correct that the motion to defer is, is within the discretion of council?
No, to deny.
No, no.
I understand, but the question is whether or not, because it was that, because the agenda said and because a request was made to defer, whether you are limited only to considering the question of the motion to defer. And I believe the answer to that is no. You can decline, you can, you can adopt a motion to deny rather than a motion to defer. Whether or not you have provided sufficient process to the applicant is for you to decide. You may wish to allow the applicant's attorney additional time to speak as it appeared that he believed that the motion to defer was going to be granted, but you can proceed with the motion to deny tonight if you choose. And I believe you have done so in the past in other, in other items.
Good. Would the attorney like a chance to speak? And, you know, we're just trying to, you know, be fair to everybody.
The applicant is not here tonight, other than me. The architect is not here. The person who represents the DHR is not here because we're on the impression we would have the opportunity to be heard. For this decision to pass, I think it'd be a due process issue. I don't think it's right. Everyone should have the opportunity to be heard. The lady, Ms. Henley, made a point. The only way this house is going to survive is to grant this application. Now, there's been talk about this not meeting the master, the master plan doesn't meet the neighborhood. The whole master plan is built around the requirements of the DHR to preserve the historical nature of this project. That's what that master plan is for. This easement is an easement that the DHR's put on, and they're going to give us the opportunity to be heard and make sure we comply with that. Now, the salles and the barns were there long before the neighborhood was rezoned from the Sajo Farm. At that time, there was opposition. There's always opposition because of cars and roads and parking. This is a small project. It's not 15 houses. It's 15 small cooperative units. The only way this house will survive, and if there's a true intent here to keep this house up and to preserve the nature of this house and the salles and the barns, is to vote for this application. We can show you that. And there's a means to do it, but it's not her, this lady alone. DHR is not going to rebuild that house. The neighbors say that it can be done. They're not putting up any money. This lady's put a lot of time and energy to make this work, a lot of time with DHR, even to the point that small details like trimming stuff will meet their requirements. If you want to keep the historical nature, which is really the DHR's objective, your objectives should be highest and best use, I'm thinking, not what DHR has to say about the easement. But if we're going to rely on the easement, let them speak before you vote. To just, for me to come here expecting that we're going to recommendation and no one's here and you vote because the neighbors have spoken to some of you and convinced you it's the right thing to do, I disagree with that. No harm can come to anybody in this room, no harm by giving us the opportunity to be heard. So if we're rejected in August, that's different. To be rejected tonight without a voice, opportunity to talk, that's not the way things are done. We have an opportunity to be heard. That's what this process is all about. That's what due process is all about. I hope I make my point. The neighbors are not here because we had, we were on the impression this will be deferred, that not a vote will be taken. That's why they're not here. So what harm can two months do to give us the opportunity to be heard? Denies that is not the right thing to do for any citizen. Everyone should have the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we do have a motion for denial. Any other discussion? The vote is open.
By a vote of five to six, the motion to deny is failed. That's correct, yes. Five voted for the denial, six voted against the denial.
Say that again.
There were five votes for to allow the denial and six votes in opposition of the denial.
Okay, do we have another motion?
Somebody's going to be.
Motion to defer.
You have to ask.
Second. Okay, the motion for defer, any discussion?
Well, I want to say something.
Yeah, please. I think, I'm sorry, so what's your name?
Ms. Bob, Mr. Bob Bruloff. He does bring an interesting point and we, you know, as fairness, no matter, you know, if we thought we made our minds up or not, I am, you know, willing to make sure everyone has the right to be heard. And I think that is something we should grant to everybody regardless of their position on a particular project. So, you know, a motion to defer is, and I think is the proper thing to do.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, we're going to go with Guy, Sabrina, and then Michael.
Did we get a second to the motion?
I also, I also think, I'm not aware any, of any harm that would come from having this fully heard. I understand and am sympathetic with those who want to deny it. It's, it is a difficult case at best. But I'd also like to make sure the folks here and I understand what the alternatives are if this property is not developed as the applicant says. Could we get a quick explanation of what the, what the current zoning is? Just so these, I just want to make sure everybody understands what that is. I'm sure most of the people do, but.
The current zoning is R10. R10 allows, I believe, it is a 50-foot wide lot and 5,000 square feet. I'm sorry, I didn't pull it up right now. Just a second. The, no, R10, yes, you're right, you're right, Mr. Moss. It is 75-foot wide lot and 7,500 square feet. That is correct. And potentially, if you were just to do the math of density, if there were no other encumbrances on the property, I believe that you could get between 17 to 21 single-family homes on the property, depending on how you lay out a street. That is the development potential if there were no encumbrances on the property.
Thank you.
Hey, Sabrina.
I believe I spoke earlier about preserving the neighborhood and the fact that, spoke with the residents, and I appreciate all the, they did a lot of hard work in making it clear, the easement, what has happened from, you know, the onset of the neighborhood up until now. They've done a lot of work to make sure we understand what their position is. And I have not changed that. I believe in preserving the neighborhood. I believe in preserving that historic house. I don't think enough engagement was done with the community. However, I do believe everyone should have a chance to speak and their case be heard. I think that's fair and therefore I think is in line with, you know, deferring it until August, just to allow the gentlemen and the other parties to put on, on their case to be heard.
Okay, Michael, and then Rosemary.
Well, I don't want to belabor the point, but I just want to take a moment to, to just make clear that my vote not to, you know, move forward with the denial should not suggest that I would favor development on that property. In fact, I'm so grateful to all the neighbors who are here, and I told them when I met with them, I believe they could teach a class in advocacy, and I hope they will consider that when they're finished with this project. But I do strongly believe that everyone should have the opportunity to be heard.
Rosemary.
It's unusual for me not to be voting with my good friend, Louis. And I don't want to, again, as some of my colleagues have said, please, don't anyone take this particular vote for one way or the other. I think every, everyone needs to be heard. And I know we're going to put ourselves through a long night probably in August, but that's, that's the process that we have, that everyone should be heard. We need to hear both sides to be able to legislate effectively. So I just ask for your understanding. Thank you.
John Moss, and then Barbara.
Now, these issues are alike in court. You file a writ, you ask for something, but you can't be guaranteed that the judge is going to say yes. You have to come prepared to the court. Tonight, we advertised, no one should ever presume that the staff recommendation is the decision of this body. They should not be so presumptuous, either for or against, and they should come prepared for this body to make a decision. Tonight was their notice. They made the assumption that we were going to defer, but that's presuming a lot. This is a public's time. This is our time. They should come prepared with their homework. What they didn't do, they made a presumption that we were, I certainly didn't tell someone that we were going to defer it. Now, maybe that got communicated somewhere, but only this body can make that choice and everyone should come here every night when their issue's on the table, prepared to represent their equity and not presume that this body will act in favor of it, ask for continuance, do anything, but that we are going to make a decision. Now, that didn't happen tonight, and you could say two wrongs don't make a right, but I'm just saying it is a mischaracterization to say that the motion in of itself denied people's due process. Now, that doesn't mean we can't be magnanimous enough to reflect that they didn't do, didn't meet their obligation to represent themselves and we're going to give them more time, but it is unfair to characterize the, either the motion or the vote as denying people the right to be heard. What happened was they didn't come prepared to represent their issue. Now, whether we grant the thing is another question, but this body did not, did not deny these people the opportunity to be heard. They just didn't come prepared to speak for their equity.
Ms. Henley.
Well, I will just say, and I also certainly respect Mr. Jones as being the district representative, but I go back to this real strong commitment that I also feel to, to protecting our historic fabric. And since this house has always been in private ownership, it's not had the deep pockets of the city to do things like testing and then, Mr. Belucci, I always say that word wrong, dendrochronology or whatever, to establish exactly when this house was built. But it's very possible this is the oldest house we have in the city. And I think that we need to, to do everything we possibly can to find a way to allow this to be protected. And I don't mean the city should purchase another house either. We can't afford the ones we've got. There must be some other way to, to assure not only that this house stays there as it is today, but that it doesn't continue to deteriorate. And, you know, when you've got bricks that were made in the 1600s that are deteriorating because they're not protected and all kinds of things, probably Mr. Belucci should be the one discussing all of this stuff with historic preservation. But it's a major thing. And I think this, if this is our oldest house, we need to at least take another couple months and see if there's not some plan that someone, and here we have the Department of Historic Resources of the state, that we are calling on to help us find a way to help this property owner protect and maintain this historic property for us. And, and, you know, I'm just sort of appealing to, to, to this, for this house, to see if we can find a way to make sure it's going to be protected. Because if we just leave it up to this private individual who is saying, I can't afford to do it by myself, there's got to be some other way. Well, maybe the way they proposed isn't the way we'd like for it to be, but there may be some way. There must be some way, and that's what I'm hoping we'll be able to find.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What Mrs. Henley says is, is true. There must be a way to preserve this house, but allowing this property to be rezoned in a manner that has multiple family development on it is not the way. And that's the reason I made the motion that I made. If the council had passed the motion, then we could move on and find out what the solution is to save the house. But now, by the, by the way the council has voted, the applicant and the developer that's involved with trying to develop it is being led to believe that there's a chance for them to build, to build multiple family rental properties in the middle of a single-family residential community. And that's just wrong.
Yes, Barbara.
I think if they've listened to those of us who voted otherwise, we have said, that doesn't mean we're going to vote for this thing, but we are saying we want, we want a plan that is going to show that this can be, maintain the house and the integrity of the, of the community. So I don't think anyone should leave here thinking that we think it's right to have multifamily dwellings there. That's not, that's not, I think, what we're concerned in. Maybe there just needs to be some other kind of way that we can make some comment on this, that what we are really looking for.
Mr. Wood.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with what, what Mr. Jones says, but for me, it's about the process of this, and I just think it's, it's better to, to allow everyone to be heard. I don't know that it's going to change my position, but I still think it's important that we allow that to happen.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, at this point, we have a motion to, who made the second?
There hasn't been.
Aaron, okay.
There hasn't been a second.
That hasn't been.
On the motion to defer.
Okay.
Second.
Second, okay. And then we have a motion to go along with the original deferral until August 20th, 2019. Vote's open.
By a vote of eight to three, you have deferred this item until August 20th.
Okay. All right, Mr. Wood, at this point, appointments, that we have a few?
Sir. Hey, Mr. Mayor, I nominate the following individuals. To the Vision, 2040 Vision Action Community Coalition, Cynthia Orocho, Edwina Bergano, Kimberly Melnick, Cheryl Snowden. To the Bike Ways and Trails Advisory Committee, Daniel Coach. To the Human Rights Commission, Carla Heseltine, Joe Bernsworth, Jamal Gunn. To Minority Business Council, Sheila Johnson, Ronald Lewis. To the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, David Hanson. To the Tidewater Community College Board, Cindy Free.
Okay. That being said, any comment? The vote is open.
By a vote of 11 to zero, you have pointed those names by the vice mayor.
Okay, is there any unfinished business? Any new business? We will adjourn to open mic night.